Good evening. I will open our Blackstone Middle Regional School District School Committee for May 25th. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence. We did lose a very long-term custodian this past week. Willie Bacon was with us for a very long time. We were very sad to hear of his passing. And I'd also like to say that our hearts and thoughts have been with the Pillabosian family and the loss of their daughter. Both Mr. and Mrs. Pillabosian were very long-term employees. Actually, Mrs. Pillabosian is still working, so she's never left us. So we're going to think of them, too. Okay, and we'll start with introduction of members.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunson, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Please, Carrie, the finance committee.
Jill Pillegallarani, Director of Learn Sports Services.
And Jason DeFalcus Superintendent.
Ashley Johnson, Blackstone.
Okay, and we'll actually go right over to your update for us.
All righty, hello, everyone. This week is the last week for our seniors at the high school. Tomorrow's their last day, which is so sad that they'll be leaving us. Student Council held a Spirit Week to celebrate their last hurrah. So on Monday, the theme was Girl Dads vs Soccer Moms. We had a lot of participation there. Tuesday was Groufit, basically all gray sweatpants, gray sweatshirts, kind of that theme. Wednesday, we had Disney Day. Thursday was Stages of Life. Freshmen dressed as infants. Sophomores dressed as middle schoolers. Juniors dressed as adults in careers. And seniors were senior citizens. Tomorrow, we're having a BMR Apparel Day. On Tuesday, the seniors went to the Boys and Girls Club for some yard work and had a barbecue. Last Wednesday, the girls' tennis team had their senior night against Bartley. On Saturday, the basketball team had their senior night against Nitmunk. Monday, softball had their senior night against Nitmunk, too. Wednesday night, seniors had their banquet at Arrowhead Acres. That was a success. Next Wednesday, the 31st, seniors have their senior trip to Six Flags. And the seniors have their annual senior parade in senior sighting tomorrow morning. May 16th, the high school concert band and wind ensemble had their last spring concert. That night, music awards were distributed along with the BMMA Music Scholarships. And student council is holding a Nitroball Tournament tomorrow afternoon for this year's last day.
Great. Of course, lots happening. Any questions for Ashley today? What time is that parade tomorrow? Just like, what time is the road closed and the actual parade? Does anyone know?
Um.
7:30?
It's usually like in the morning when they do it and they have like each of their little themes go across and all the students will come outside and watch. It's a pretty fun experience.
Just trying to coordinate the drive-in and the road being closed. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll keep you updated. Our next meeting date or time might be changed.
Great, sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on, we have Consent Agenda A warrants and minutes of meeting of our meeting for May 15th. And I believe that's two, that's our, our meeting and then the joint meeting that we have. Someone has the folder. So I'm looking for a motion for Consent Agenda A.
So moved.
Motion made by Carrie. Second by Dan. Any questions on any of the items in there? All those in favor of Consent Agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you. And moving on, we have public forum. If there's anyone here that wanted to speak to us tonight? Someone has a poster. If you want to have a seat here and introduce yourselves.
I'm Madison Healy. I'm Julia Deschardes. We're here for our Class Civics project, which is a mandatory assignment for us to complete. Okay, so basically, we sent out this survey to everyone in the school. And it had a bunch of different options on it, but what we're focusing on is students who want outdoor seating, which was 63.5%. And then students who want more classroom option, more seating options in classrooms, 68.2%. So.
What is your, what was, what is your project?
Our project is basically to either have more outdoor seating, like at the high school, or have more seating options in classrooms. So what we need is permission.
To accept donations.
To accept any donations.
Yeah.
The Amazon thing.
So a classmate is also created an Amazon wishlist if we are able to open that and accept it for any people who would like to donate to us. Maddie will pass around a letter that we would plan to send to any people asking for donations.
Thank you. Thank you. And you said this is a civics project?
Yes.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Conti.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If you can read the quotes. Do you want to? All right, so we have two quotes that we found. The first one is 92% of teachers reported that their students were more engaged and better behaved than children, and also self-reported being happier. And this is with seating outside.
And then from a current BMR senior, we got a quote that students seem to be more focused and happier when they work outside. So having more seating options would make that possible.
Yeah.
All right. That's it. Anyone want to ask any questions or have comments about?
So it's like for classroom time outside?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sounds like a great idea.
Love it.
Are you looking for seating that's like permanent or something that they can move in, out type of thing?
For outside, something more permanent, like how we have the picnic tables outside, but there's just not enough of it. Like, there are times where there are three classes outside on a nice day, and we usually have to sit on the ground when all of them are taken up. So we want more options for out there. And then maybe in classrooms, something you can move around just to make it more comfortable.
And for outdoors, like things like umbrellas to put inside the picnic table so you can bring your Chromebooks outside and actually see what you're being able to, like what you're trying to do.
How often do you get outside now?
More often now that it's nicer outside.
Especially like on those days, yeah.
And you just sit on the ground or kind of like?
Yeah, if the picnic tables are open, we'll try to sit there, but sometimes they're not, like especially during lunches because seniors can sit outside, so.
I kind of wish Matt was here because I would ask where our tents are right now. We had COVID tents that were like a thorn in his side, to be honest, but.
They were hard to keep up in the.
Yeah, the weather. I would have made it.
We do have them still.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
We should go into a rental business. Just saying. So have you already made a wishlist or are you?
Yes, I believe a student has made a wishlist for the project. It hasn't been like sent to anybody yet.
And then we were planning to like call different stores like Boles, right?
Yes.
And then like Home Depot or anywhere like that for either supplies or like if anyone wants to donate anything.
And this would be available for everyone in all grades?
Yes.
What's your timeframe?
I think by the end of the year.
Yeah.
You should present us like specifications on like the different type of seating that you're thinking about and the umbrellas and maybe at our next meeting, you bring it.
And what type of indoor seating are you looking for? Are you looking like for desk and chair alternatives or?
Yes, like small things like bean bags or just like cushion things that makes it more comfortable.
How does the principal feel about this?
I don't.
You interviewed?
No.
I don't think I was either.
We had talked about the desire of being classified in our classroom with the building project pending. A lot of things are on hold. And one of the things that we are looking to do is build the new school around what our needs are. And I think the input from our students is really important. I think in the meantime, some more seating in the courtyard would be helpful and something we would support the purchase of.
Okay, so the way this works, typically, things that come to us in public forum are informational or, but at any time, a member can make a motion if they want to, if you want to do that, it doesn't, if it's, even if it's something that's not on our agenda, which this is not. I think maybe what we'd be looking at tonight would be a motion to let them explore, you know, what that specifically would look like. Like you said, bring us some specs back and leave the door open for them to continue their project.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to put on the next agenda for this group to come back with their presentation of outdoor slash indoor seating ideas for the school committee to consider.
All right, so motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. So as of right now, our next meeting is June 8th. Do you think that's enough time to?
Yeah.
Get something together, like definitely a viable wishlist and, you know, what pieces would look like and how, I guess, of how, how much you'd be looking for, you know, to add to the courtyard and to indoor classrooms?
Do like a plot plan.
Okay.
Lay it out, distance from the building.
Okay.
And you're looking for all of this to be donations, not?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor with a second. Any other questions or comments for our students? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will add it to our agenda for June 8th. If that date does change, I will make sure that Ms. Fallis knows to let you know when it is postponed to, if that does happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for the research and.
Thank you.
I think it would be a nice setting to hold this over to a newer facility. So, good job.
Thank you, ladies.
Any other public forum requests for tonight? Moving on, school committee items, we have student recognition, which is our Bella Victorian, who's here to join us tonight. Finally had a free night to be able to join us. If you want to come up with mom or, you've been up there before, Lisa. Thank you for sitting.
As I was mentioning earlier, very excited that you're here. And just so the community knows, each year, the Worcester County Superintendent Association has a really big, a very special luncheon and award ceremony at Holy Cross. And this year, we had ours in March. And at that event, each school district in Worcester County, and there's a lot of us, as you know, recognizes just one student that really exemplifies leadership and strong academics and really the core values of the, of each of their representing school systems. And I was thrilled that, not only to be involved in the planning of that event, but also to be acknowledging Tori. However, Tori was unable to be with us on that day because she was at another very special event. So we asked her to come and join us earlier in the spring, which she couldn't because she was at another special event. So I said to Tori, you're really hard to get ahold of. But we are so honored that you are here and we're so pleased to be celebrating you tonight. And so if you were at the luncheon, I would have shared very certain specific highlights of your work. So actually, it was okay, like I could take a minute and just share with everybody what I would have shared at that event. And so one of the things that we talk about when we're acknowledging our scholars are their top three academic accomplishments. And we ask very specifically that, like not to include, you know, AP courses or GPA or that kind of thing, but different, right? Like kind of different academic accomplishments. And so for Tori, we have three. Winning the Harvard Book Award at the end of her junior year was one. Being nominated in participating in the Tufts Mini Med School was another. And earning high honors every quarter of high school, leading to being the valedictorian her senior year, which she shared, less we knew. That's wonderful. And then we also ask for the top three non-academic, right? Because there's a leadership piece to this as well. And so for Tori, the first was earning the highest trumpet score in Massachusetts All State, which I actually think that was one of the reasons that you couldn't be at one of the events we were asking.
Yeah.
Auditioning and getting accepted into the Macy's Great American Marching Band, which I know made the Thanksgiving holiday even better for all of us here at BMR because we watched you doing your amazing work. And then the last was earning one of the highest scores in the country for all Eastern Ensemble. That is really quite impressive. And then we have a little personal note that I'll share as well, that you have to keep going even when it's difficult, believe in yourself and truly follow your dreams. Holding on to your dreams is what will get you far in life and help you be successful. And then your favorite quote, "Failure is the opportunity to begin again more intelligently", by Henry Ford. And so I am just so incredibly proud of you. I'm so glad that you could join us tonight so that we could award you just a very small token of our gratitude and appreciation for your work as our BMR Worcester County Superintendent Scholar recipient. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now that I've embarrassed you.
We are all very proud of you, Tori.
Thank you so much.
And I will say, I mean, it's always nice to see the classes come together, but this year is, it's very special for many reasons, so.
Agreed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we definitely can't wait to see even the bigger and better things you're going to do when you do leave BMR.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time tonight.
Thank you.
It's been a busy time for you. We know that, so.
You're gonna have to get used to this public speaking thing. I think speech coming up.
I hope you have a few weeks after graduation of nothing.
Exactly.
I know you're, you're going to help with the band in the summer and you're, do you work? Do you?
I'm going to, yes.
Give yourself a break. You're going to work for the rest of your life, so it's okay to take the summer off.
Someone's got to pay that bill.
Oh, come on. Only a few weeks. And because Tori's going to BU, she's joint, right?
Yep.
All right, well, good job.
Very decent scholarship money, yeah. Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very deserved. Two cents. Hard earned. Mom is not paying that bill. No, good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, always good to start with citing, yes, so. Next up, MSBA update. Do you have an update for us for the review of eligibility period and other information?
Yes. Is that okay, Tara?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I just wanted to share with the committee and the community that as of Thursday, next Thursday, we are officially in the window for our eligibility period for MSBA project. And that actually does have very specific components of work that have to be done in that eligibility period. So in your packet, there is just a short kind of one-page document that reviews what those are. And I do want to take a moment, if it's all right, to just talk through them so that all of our family and friends tuning in at home have a really good understanding of just what it means to be in the eligibility period, which lasts for us until February 26th, 2024, which is hard to imagine, but I feel like in the blink of an eye, that'll be here. And there's lots to work, lots of work to do before then. You'll notice that underneath Module 1, we have a series of what the MSBA calls deliverables, a certain amount of time or days to get those done, and then the due date listed next to it. And so I'll just run through those briefly. The first is initial compliance certificate. We have a month to get that signed and in place. I should also mention that Jennifer Flynn, who is our MSBA Senior Project Manager, who has been a direct contact with myself, Tara as a Chair of the Capital Planning Subcommittee, and Erin as the School Committee Chair, has sent lots of information back and forth with all of the documents that I'll review tonight. So we have all of the things that we need. Now it's just working through the process and actually executing on them. But that first is the initial compliance certificate. The next is a really important one, and it's something for the school committee to think about for our July 10th meeting, which is the identification of a school building committee. I know we've talked a bit about it in previous meetings. I know the Capital Planning Subcommittee has, has also discussed, you know, kind of high-level stakeholder groups that should be present on that committee. But we will have to have a school building committee voted by the school committee in place July 31st, which means we'll have it on our agenda for July 10th. So we can start really getting the wheels in motion there and getting that in place. The educational profile questionnaire is a really big one. Members of our leadership team, many of which are, are sitting up here in, in our audience tonight, met already to review not only this document, but the educational profile, which is what it sounds like. And really, it's talking about the teaching and learning side of the building. And Jill met, kind of quickly referenced it earlier, but, you know, the idea is to construct a building around the teaching and learning needs of the school and what we want to be able to bring forward for teaching and learning to our students, not only today, tomorrow, but for many years in, in front of us. So we will start by filling out and working through our educational profile currently. And then we will work on the plan that was submitted through the Statement of Interest that led to the acceptance of being in the MSBA pipeline. And so we'll work through that process and complete that as well. That is due August 30th. We have already blocked, I don't know, four or five meeting dates from now through, I think, July to get this work done. So our plan is to have this done well, a month or more, well in advance of the due The next section, also due on August 30th, is the online enrollment projection. So we did an enrollment projection, as you remember, as part of our Statement of Interest, but we'll have to redo that and update that. So we'll go through that process of updating the online enrollment projection numbers. As you can imagine, that's a wicked important piece because MSBA is very clear. They build, I believe it's 100, I think it's 170 square feet per student, and they will not build you for one more kid. So that number really needs to be done correctly, accurately. And so we will be working to get that done. The enrollment certification also that has to be done, executed, that, we have 180 days. That is due on November 28th. So we've got a pretty big gap between those two pieces. The maintenance and capital planning information, that also, we have 180 days. That's due on November 28th. Our local vote authorizing a feasibility study has to be done by February 26th. So we want to make sure that we have that done before that, and I'll explain why in a moment. And then the feasibility study agreement has to be executed and in place by February 26th as well. So that's one of the reasons we want to have the vote before that, so that we have time to actually execute on the agreement. That's one piece. The other piece of having a local vote, hopefully authorizing a feasibility study earlier than this, is because MSBA has a board meeting in December. If you remember, many of you attended the one that, the virtual one that we had last December, I think it was December 21st when we were invited in. So they'll have one around that same timeframe again. And if we have our feasibility study approved by the towns and our agreement in place, they can vote at that meeting to move us into feasibility. So it just gives us a jumpstart by a couple of months, but would allow us to get that project rolling. And as all of you know, you, I know many of you do this type of work or have done this type of work, nothing's ever on schedule. So it might only sound like a couple of months, that actually could help us open on time, frankly, you know, later down the line, should this all be approved and move forward. So certainly more to come there. But the eligibility period does end February 26th, 2024. And you know, the way we work, we do everything usually early. We don't wait, we try to get ahead of it. So having that additional time in case there are any issues would be helpful as well. So we're not backed right up to that deadline. Let me pause here and ask a few questions. I know it's really straightforward, but.
Any questions?
Yes. Real quick, the first, what would the school building committee be composed of, like various town members, school committee members, and is there a requirement of a minimum, maximum?
So we have a call June 1st with our, with Jennifer Flynn from MSBA. And one of the pieces that we are going to get into with her is exactly what is required to be on that committee. Usually, it's a parent, it's, you know, the Board of Selectment member, it's a FinCom person. Some committee, building committees also have a student representative, administration, of course, it's driven by the school committee, usually the school committee reps are on there as well. So it's essentially a compilation of all the stakeholders, you would imagine, that would be at the table for that. But we will have the definitive numbers and all of the groups outlined for us on June 1st.
And the next question is, the vote for the feasibility study, would you anticipate that being maybe in like November?
I'm hoping for a November vote. It would be great to have that done in place and the feasibility agreement situated and then be able to move into feasibility.
November would be ideal because then you have, you're coming into the holidays and then you're too late in January. It's real tight if you're doing it in January. And the earlier we have the vote, allows.
And that's typically when the towns would hold a special town meeting? I feel like they didn't last year. There was no business, I think, but.
Like, we could be the business.
We have, I would imagine, we have to be the business. I think it's us that, it's the district that calls for, is it the district? I'm pretty sure it would be the district.
Well, we can, if they're having special town meetings, we can be on them.
Correct, yeah.
But if they're not, we can.
We have to call for it.
We can call for it.
Yeah.
We have the draft language as well already for the vote. So we have everything.
From MSBA?
Yes. Yeah, they're, they're very helpful. They send along all of the language that we need.
If it's being done, if it is something that we're holding, is it joint or we're holding one in each town?
It is each town. So I would prepare, I would just recommend that the district prepares because I think there's a 45-day period after notification that the towns would have to hold a special town meeting. If the town doesn't announce that they're having one, then the district should be ready to make that request for one in the two towns. Because if they're not having one, we would have to make that request and that process would be to notify the towns.
Yeah.
And so we should be prepared just in case.
With the 45 days.
Yeah. Because Blackstone definitely doesn't always have a November town meeting.
Do you have any other questions?
And to be clear, we did have one a few years ago for the JFK, the windows and the doors. That was a Saturday morning November meeting, but I'm pretty sure the district had to request it at the time.
That sounds right, actually.
Yeah.
We are on top of it.
And the other piece that I just wanted to mention is there are, so the deliverables in Module 1 do not seem like much of a heavy lift. But as we get deeper into each of the modules, the work does get much more intense, as you can imagine, once you get into, you know, designing and going through that whole process. And MSBA is really clear that they don't do extensions. So you meet their deadline, or you just withdraw from the process. Like they really don't have time or much tolerance for missing deadlines of any sort. But I wanted to mention that we are looking at different groups that do help consult and work with school systems that are going through this process. This is our first MSBA actual building project. When we did the middle school, it was SBA, which had a completely different set of regulations. So I'm mentioning it only as a discussion item to say that at some point, we may want to entertain the idea of having some professional guidance and assistance, as it's the first time I'm going through this process. I've been on multiple building committees, but I've never been in this seat doing this process. So I certainly don't want to make an error, a costly one at that. So we may decide at some point that we would like to pursue a consultant to help guide us through this.
And would that be at our expense? Or would that be into this project's long-term expense?
It would be our expense. So something to consider as we start to move forward through...
But we definitely don't want to miss deadlines.
I would think at the minimum, just at least review what you're submitting, you know, at the minimum. But we had professionals when it came to the regional agreement that were advising us on that. And it's always good to have another set of eyes.
And that's the worry, is that we would hit our deadlines, but we'd miss a box, right? Like, oh, you didn't check this in blue ink. So you're out. I mean, it's really like they're finicky about even, and I don't mean to be facetious, like they're, but the color pen you use, you have to sign stuff in blue pen. Like, they're very specific about all their rules, right? Like, you've signed things, it has to be in blue ink.
Is that something that you would bring to the Capital Committee and they would bring to us? Or do you bring that to us?
We'd have a discussion at the Capital Planning Committee first to make sure that Tara, Carrie, and the others that are part of that are comfortable and want to do that. And if there was the support there...
Then you bring it to us.
With their approval.
Let us know what you need.
And that was it on that.
All right. So moving on, we have requests for the Charger Strong Maintenance Scholarship. Would you like to join us and present that request?
Yes. So as you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Willie Bacon passed away last week. He was a beloved member of our staff. He was hired in July of 2001 and worked up until last year when health restrictions forced an early retirement for him. He would have continued to be here. I know that. He started with the use of vending profits from the vending machines, a scholarship that was a maintenance scholarship, sponsored scholarship to benefit any student. It did not have to be a college-bound student, but someone who exemplified what it meant to be a charger. So with that, I would like to request that the name be changed to the Wilfred Willie Bacon Junior Memorial Scholarship. We have reached out to his family, Paul, who also works for the district, and they were very touched by the request. So I'm hoping that you will honor us and honor him. And we would give that scholarship out next Thursday at Senior Awards.
Motion to approve request.
Motion made by Dan and second by Ted. And just to make sure that everyone, this is well within our guidelines. We have a policy for any type of memorial to be made in the form of scholarship. So this falls within the way our policies are written. Any
I just want to add also that Willie was a BMR alum as well. So you couldn't get someone who was more charger-ready. And when I came in last year, asked me whatever I needed and welcomed me, and he left me little chocolates on my desk. So I missed that. So it would be great.
All those in favor of renaming...
Madam Chair, could I just add, my experience working with the school at various times, and Willie was always there when the town needed him on a Sunday or nighttime. And he was always had a great personality, always gave you a hard time if it was after hours, but in a pleasant way. And he will be missed. Thank you for that opportunity, Madam Chair.
Of course. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you so much for taking the time to do that.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a field trip request. It looks like it is for Mystic Aquarium, June 8th. And it's coming to us because they're leading the state. And the buses are paid for through the PTO, not the school. That's on all of the kids' field trips. It's always been that way. Any questions about the field trip requests? So I just need a motion to approve.
I am happy to motion for this one. I love seeing that all the kids are back to what it was pre-COVID.
So motion made by Carrie, second by Tara. Any other questions or comment? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Yes, it's very nice to see them. I've been seeing the updates on the school pages. So they're going to the zoos, and it's almost like we're unanimous.
The look of awe on the third graders' faces when they saw the coach buses.
Paid for by the PTO, by the way.
Yeah. My wife was a chaperone. She said it was...
Oh, nice.
Yeah. They were shocked, so.
This was like luxury.
Leather seats.
Not a school bus.
The first grade teacher said that the kids actually got in and walked about. They were sitting there like this.
Oh.
So it was kind of hysterical, I said.
They deserve to be spoiled a little bit.
Yes.
All right. So moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Great. Thank you so much. Nice to see everyone this evening. First up, we are going to hear from our building principals. They have for you this evening an overview of any recommended changes to the school handbooks, student handbooks for next year, school year '23, '24. And if we could start with the elementary, that'd be great. And our dynamic duo does these together, as many of you, I'm sure, recall. What we did in your packets, and I apologize for the thickness of them, but we did print an updated handbook, but then you didn't have to go rightfully through everything. We included a cover page that just goes over what the recommended changes are. And so the principal certainly will not walk through the handbook, unless you have certain questions that you'd like them to address. But instead, we'll go through the updates that they're looking for approval on.
And just so you know, years ago, we used to go through the whole handbook. I remember that.
So on the document, you have a list of things that we recommend to change. A few items is like the basic changes, the new school committee members, and new calendar for next year, mission statement coming from the Blueprint 2.0, and school hours, we changed it last year, but we caught a mistake. And then a couple of big items that we wanted to reword, for example, the absentee call in. And you want...
Sure. So we are adding physically in the handbook. We do this anyways, but if we don't hear from a family after multiple calls, we do send the police to the house just to ensure that everybody's okay. So we'll contact several people on their call list, and send a one call, and send an email, and then call again. So we called multiple times. And so we're just worried that the kids aren't somewhere safe. So we do send... It doesn't happen very often, but we just wanted to make sure that was in writing for families. And then we added, so we both added this year, and we've found it very successful at Millville, an MES attendance@bmsd.net. So parents instead can just email and let us know if their child's out. And both Mrs. Sterman and I have access to that, and we can check it. And we created this because one of us was out, Mrs. Sterman was out, and parents were emailing her to say she was out. And I was like, huh. So I was calling them and saying, well, you're not here. And they said, well, email Mrs. Sterman. And I was like, okay, we've got to fix this. So then Jenny did it as well. So we added our email address in there. Families were communicating, it was communicated to families via our like, who's in the building type of thing, but we put it in the handbook as well. And then the other thing we changed, we had originally five days for documentation to let us know if your child was out for an excused absence. We did increase that to 15. We did check out other towns to see, and 15 was another local school district. So we kind of went with that for our changes. So we did from five to 15 days to give us notification for an excusal.
We did update the toddy policy. We couldn't figure out like, what time is toddy? Because we keep changing the hours. Well, not keep changing the hours. We changed the hours and said, okay, it's toddy. So we figured it out. We changed it to 8:45 for the complex and 8:55 for MES. And then the study habits and homework is just updating some of the capital letters and, you know, like minor changes. One big change is the dress code is more applied to my school than Christine's. We added more specific. I do notice this year, we have some inappropriate dress coming to school and a distraction to the learning. So we added the short shorts and the bare midriff and clothing that are too revealing. And we're asking boys and girls to cover up. I don't want to just...
It does happen in my building, too. Actually, and then one other change that we've kind of run into, so with our dismissal being 3:10 and theirs being 3:00, we've had parents call at 3 o'clock and say, put my child on the bus, or they're going to be parent pickup. And then we don't have time to get them. They're in a special. They're trying to... So we've had, luckily, everyone's been safe, but we don't want to run into that. We've had, maybe we put a kid on the bus instead of parent pickup line, or vice versa, put a kid in parent pickup line instead of the bus. So we actually are asking that families come. There will be no dismissal from the front office after 15 minutes before the end of the school day. So that way, it gives us time to make sure the information's communicated. Otherwise, they need to go the back door where our drop off and same with yours, I mean, our pickups are. So the complex would be 2:45, parents have to come to the front office by, and Millville would be 2:55. So that way, it's crazy at the end of the day, in trying to dismiss 300, 400 kids out of the door. We just get nervous. We're going to have some problems. So we've added that. And again, we've seen that in other schools before. I think that's really the only big, big thing.
Any questions? Any questions for our elementary updates?
Madam Chair, I would just say, I just received this 48, 72 hours ago. I am one of those people that like to go through and take a look. From the little bit that I did go through, I would like to have some more discussion on this. So I'd like to make a motion not to vote on this tonight, to accept it, and give us some more time for review.
So you're looking to review the entire handbook or just the updates?
More so, there's some language in here that I'm finding, you know, concerning. And I just want to have, I don't know if tonight's a good night to have the discussion about it, or if we should...
If you have items, I mean, it's best to do it with the principals, because the handbooks are presented to us from them. It's not something that we give them and say, this is your handbook. So it is appropriate to do it tonight while they're here.
Okay. So on page seven, we have the core values. And this is seen in the middle school as well, but not seen in the high school.
Those core values in general?
No, no core values. Second paragraph on page seven, it looks like we're taking a certain section of students and spotlighting them. And I'm just concerned about their, you know, being kind of chosen out or, you know, spotlighted, where this part is actually covered by the overall bullying policy. So I'm just kind of concerned about that second paragraph.
But are you saying the second paragraph is the same in middle school, but in...
So I cannot find it in the high school from, and I didn't have enough time to look through all of this. I couldn't find it in the high school. I did find it in the middle school in the same language, so maybe I just missed it. But again, I haven't had enough time to review it all. So I don't know if that's more of an overlying thing with the entire core values. I'm sorry?
Do you know what page it is in middle school? I would assume it's at the beginning.
I apologize. I did have it highlighted, but... Is there a problem with waiting till we vote to approve it? You want to do the vote and approve this tonight, but is there a problem if we don't?
No, but if there's work to be done, we need to do it as a group. So I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out what he's asking. Like, is he asking them to make more changes?
Yeah. Well, I'm just looking, you know, the core values. I don't know if it's something, if that's driven by the individual schools, or is that driven by the district? The district.
Yes, the district.
You know, it's the second paragraph where, you know, we understand that members of certain student groups and such as students with disabilities and so on and so forth. It just seems like it's redundant and is spotlighting a sect of students that, you know, I feel like we're giving more protection to than others. So I want to make sure that this is as fair and equal to all students on the same level.
I think I get what you're saying. So you're saying paragraph two is pretty much included in three, so it doesn't need to be separated. Am I right?
That's precisely what I'm saying.
Just the reason that this is identified is these students are in a protected class by the law. So we do specifically call them out, because they do get additional rights and protections. They're a protected class.
What law is that?
I'm happy to look it up if you want.
Yeah. I just, I mean, not to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. I'll tell you the protected class law.
If there is something in there, then maybe we put a footnote in the back of it where, you know, it clearly states why that is being singled out. What my fear is, is that, I don't know how many students are going to actually pour over this like we are going to. But if they see that, and, you know, is it, you know, if I'm a bully, which I don't think I am, but if I'm a bully and I choose on who I'm going to bully, am I going to choose someone not in this class because I'm going to have less discipline? Am I going to go after someone not in this protected class? If I'm a hammer looking for a nail, that's what I'd be looking for. How would I get the least discipline? So that's my concern overall with that paragraph.
It's on page 20 in the middle.
Thank you, Tara.
So you, I just want to...
Yeah, it's chapter, it's just to your question. It's chapter one fifty-one B. It's unlawful discrimination because of race, gender, creed, sexual orientation, et cetera.
Which I believe is in the third paragraph. Um, or it is stated out in here. It just feels like this is very specific to a certain part of the student body.
Madam Chair, could, maybe I offer that we, we allow the, the principals to give us their updates, uh, from, from the different schools and then maybe take a time to review this as individual members and then come back before taking an action. Is that what you were asking about?
But I don't think it's, so I just needed to hear more about, um, honestly, like what direction you were going with that because I, I feel like it doesn't interrupt their updates to the, this is already the handbook. So this isn't some, what you're reading isn't something new. Um, it's probably been in there written this way for the last five to seven years.
Okay.
Core value wise, but if there's something specific to the changes being recommended, then I think that's what we would hold on tonight. Like the, the change is being recommended. If you want more, then there's something we can do in addition to, but this work that they've already done, I don't see why we wouldn't vote on it tonight as presented, um, or make the, make changes with them here because they've put the time in to bring the changes to us. If you need additional changes, that's, I think we would work in other meetings or, or like, or I, I think it would have to be presented.
I don't, I don't have any issue with the changes that are being proposed as they are tonight.
Okay.
Given this to.
It doesn't mean we can't revisit handbooks if there are specific things, but again, they are the principal, they're the buildings' handbooks, not school committees. Policies would be ours. Handbooks are from the buildings. Um, so they could have different dress codes from building to building. Um, and again, that's at the discretion of the principals.
Core values remain the same between the building.
Core values are the district. So that would be a conversation. Uh, I mean, are there any other pieces like that that you want to point out? Like, that's something we would, could put on our agenda and talk about as a committee.
Talk about that in the future.
But I don't think it would affect, it would, the only way it would affect a handbook is we would have to reprint the handbook with our district's core values if we update them. That would be like vision, core values. That's a district piece.
Right. Yep.
It should be consistent through all.
It should, well, it's consistent because it's a district, like if.
I think we're confusing a couple of things. The, this language is underneath a section titled core values. The core values are listed next to, if you, if you are, and I, I don't hear you saying this, Matt. I want to clarify that, but I don't hear you questioning community achievement, respect, civility. I hear you digging or wanting to dig into the second paragraph, um, in saying that it, it reads as though this, these students are getting extra, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but extra whatever you had said, protection. Um, and they are. What, what I actually, if you wanted to make changes, what I would pose is we add to it, race, color, religious, because those are missing from this and that is chapter one fifty-one B. So if we do want to do that, we could add, we could add other groups to this list. It's origin, national origin, ancestry or sex, religious creed, race, color. So we could certainly add to the, those groups. Those are all protected classes under the law.
Be nice to have just all students covered under special.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Kids that are too young because they're smart, they start school early. Yeah, you know, everyone should get, if, you know, you haven't reached puberty yet, you, you're in middle school, you, you know, you get picked on. Can we add those kids in there also? It seems like we need to.
The point being is that there's a lot in, it just seems like it's being very specific. And if there is laws around that, then I'm not aware of, but again, I only had a few days to look over this. Um, I looked over handbooks before, um, probably more so after my high school career than, I probably should have taken more time in high school, but just seeing that, it kind of stuck with me that, you know, we're kind of targeting a certain set of students and it's concerning to me. Uh, in, you know, so that is something that I'd like to address in, in future meetings.
Okay.
For your changes, uh, the only question I have, if I could, Madam Chair, is, uh, you mentioned Christina, the, um, the contact to the police, you said after multiple calls. Is there a specific number of times that you're going to try and contact before you reach out to the police? Uh, so it's more, you know, regimented.
Right. So we typically will call every, like the, the parents on, like the, in our X two, we have like a zero, one, two, three, four, whatever. So we call all those contacts and we actually just had this happen this week and we couldn't get in touch. We said, you know, do you know where your grandchild is or whatever? And we can't get in touch with your daughter or your son and, um, still no contact. We sent another one call, another email. So we do usually probably between four and, four and six. It depends on how many contacts they have, but we try to do, we do at least two or three calls home, couple emails and a one call. Um, and that point, it's usually probably close to forty-five minutes into the school day and we can't really wait too much more.
Correct.
And most of the parents call.
Right.
They call in the morning. So it's very small amount.
Hmm.
So we, so we do make those phone calls. So it is alarming and when we don't get, we receive a phone call back after four or five attempts.
And that's my, that's my concern was the, was the timing from realizing that students not in school with any sort of correspondence to when we actually reach out to authorities to.
And a lot of times we'll call homerooms because sometimes our, um, parents will email the homeroom teacher.
Mm-hmm.
And we say, did you hear from so-and-so? And they'll say, nope. So then, you know, just guts nerve-wracking.
That's all I have.
All right. So any other questions for the elementary changes as they were presented? So I'm looking for a motion to approve the changes for twenty-three, twenty-four as presented.
Motion.
Motioned me by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Tara and Carrie. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just ask for just a point of information? Um, if a concern, so listening to Mr. Catalano, if he has concerns, he can address those concerns in the future back to the school committee?
So I think what you should do is, um, what he just, he said he wanted, well, I, we can clarify it now, but it's a review of the core values is what I got out of this whole conversation. And then I, we could put that on the school committee agenda.
Okay. And I wasn't even.
So it's not going to be like the elementary handbook on the agenda. It's going to be the district's core values.
Okay. And I was.
And if anything else that.
Not to be a, like on any specific, like, to, to Mr. Catalano's point, we received these, you know, within the last couple of days.
The only thing where we need to review tonight are the changes being presented to us. We're not going through this handbook saying, well, we think there should be, you know, a different amount of excused absences. That is up to our administrators to bring to us. Like, um, we're depending on them to have their handbooks, the way they're running their buildings. Do you see what I'm saying? Niza, but you can say that, but Dan, I have news here.
My question.
These are online.
The opportunity to finish my question.
You can see these online anytime. They're not really just presented.
You haven't allowed me to finish my question. Um, any issue, what I'm trying to get the point is I don't, whatever the issue is, whatever issue is, if, if a school committee member were to read through one of these, and I want to know if there's an avenue that it can come back to the school committee. And I'm not saying core value, whatever, whatever it was in, in here. I'm, I'm making the argument because I, just a week or so ago, I had something dropped on my lap as a selectmen that we didn't have time to review. So I, I actually, whatever Mr. Catalano's point was, he stated that he didn't have time to review it. And, and just to be clear, the school principals, the building principals are coming to this body for approval of, um, their student handbooks. So it's not just for the changes. It's approval of the book. So if any member of this committee has a question on anything in that handbook, uh, they have a right to ask and, and ask for more time or if they have an avenue in the future, whatever the issue is, to readdress it with this board. And I just wanted to make that clear because.
But what we need to look at tonight are the presented changes to what has already been an approved handbook year after year. And these are public, available.
But we approving the whole handbook, not just the changes. We're approving the whole handbook.
We are approving the changes.
The whole handbook has to be approved.
It's already written, Dan. I, I don't know why you're trying to change. We are.
Not trying to change anything. It's.
It was approved by last year's committee. So we're continuously continuing that process.
Okay. So the point of my question is there is an avenue to address any concern in the future for any, any member of the school committee. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms., Madam Chair.
So Matt, are you comfortable with the answer that was given for that question tonight? Like, are, do you?
I understand this.
The whole handbook should be put on hold while we look at a district piece of it or?
So as I understood the, um, the agenda point, um, it says review and request to approve school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student handbooks, um, understanding that there was changes proposed. Uh, it was presented on the agenda as a approval of the entire, um, handbook. So my point being is that I did not have enough time to review the entire handbook. Yes, it's on the district website. Um, but, you know, the agenda was only put out, you know, forty-eight hours ago within, you know.
But that is why it's separated to what is changed versus what is coming out of what has already been longstanding approved in, in that sense.
Understood. Uh, but the agenda item was not specific to the changes.
Well, our motions are based on the changes. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, but I don't want you to feel that. So if you're, if you say, well, that you don't agree with something on this piece, the hand, the pullout, the handout, there, then there would be the time where we would be asking the administrator to make a change to that. But if there's something you want to pull out of here and talk about that isn't, that either is a district piece or is something you want that building to change, then it still doesn't stop us from approving or denying the changes that are already requested tonight.
Can I just have one point of clarity?
Sure.
Um, the changes that can be made have to be within the law and has to be within your policies. So we can't change things that we just don't like because we don't like them. We have to follow the law and we have to follow school committee policy. So I just want to make that point of clarity.
I think if I'm understanding kind of the discussion on this, it's Dan and Matt are saying that the agenda item was to approve the student handbook for the year, where Erin is saying what we just did was approve the changes to the yearbook item. So if the agenda had said review and request to approve school, school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, soon book, student handbook updates, that would have been a difference in what we're going back and forth on, right? Is that, so we just approved the updates, but they would like to relook at the handbook at another time.
So do you want to handle, do you guys want to do this differently?
Do we motion just to approve the updates? Can we motion on that if it wasn't on like the agenda that way?
Yeah.
The motion already passed.
That motion, yes. But what I'm asking is, is do you want, do you want to do it as an approval of this whole handbook? And, I mean, we probably have to add a meeting to do that.
I think you should keep it as.
A motion to, okay. All right. So moving forward, we have, thank you for your patience.
Of course.
We have Mary here to present the middle school handbook changes.
Right. So, um, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, we have to make sure that our handbooks are reflective of current law and discipline law has changed this year. So we needed to make significant updates to our handbook, discipline sections to align with those laws. That's the bulk of the changes. The rest of my methodology was really looking for consistency among the schools. So when I looked at my handbook, I checked the elementary handbook and the high school handbook in district language and realized that my mission and vision statement didn't line up with anybody else's. And rather than try to track down whose mission and vision statement was the current updated, what we're aligned to, I fell back on the blueprint two point O and the portrait of a graduate because that is really the work that we do. And so that was why mine begins with striking the mission and vision statement that's in the handbook now and replacing it with the blueprint two point O and the portrait of a graduate. Now, if that is cause for concern, I'm happy to leave the mission and vision as it is and add those two things in. Um, it sounds like, you know, there's conversation now about relooking at the district mission and vision. However, we want to handle that. I just wanted to clarify the method to my madness. That was my thinking is that when I looked at this, I couldn't match it up to anybody else. And rather than, I, I, I went with, well, what do we do? What are we actually living and breathing? And that's the blueprint and the portrait of a graduate. So that was, that was that thought. Um, the other thing that the other handbooks have that mine didn't were, you know, the list of school committee members, administration, district admin, all of that. So I just tried to align mine to look more like everyone else's. The next, any, before I, do we go change by change and have discussion? Do you have thoughts on that before I move on to the next?
That's fine.
Chunk?
Yes, change by change on your, on this.
Okay.
Paper that you.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing your last name is different on this.
It is. Good catch. You win the prize. Yay. I'm getting married next month.
Okay. So you updated.
Yeah.
I'm like, wait.
I know. That was, I think the first time I got to, you know, put the two names together. Got a little thrilled, very exciting. Ju-Free, it's pronounced Ju-Free. So yes.
Good luck with the kids.
Thanks.
We'll be calling you something very different.
That's okay. Ms. G is fine. We'll go with whatever. Cattillo's fine too. Who cares? Just call me Mary. Um, in multiple places through our handbook, and I didn't list all of the pages. I think when I did like a control F search, there were like 10 hits. We have references to the BMR COVID-19 handbook appendix. We can be done with that. Yay. So I struck those. On page nine, we have, uh, schedule a change to how we have students request schedule changes. It's really high school language that was in the old handbook. Um, and we updated it to be more consistent with what we actually require students to do. Um, on page 11, for student responsibilities, we added some bullets directly from the portrait of a graduate. Um, holding themselves to high academic and behavioral standards comes right from the character column of our portrait of a graduate and reflecting on their decisions and choices and learning from their mistakes also comes from the portrait of a graduate. Off the top of my head, I can't remember which column, but it's, the language comes right from our, our POG. And, um, we want to add in something about engaging in responsible online and social media behavior just because they're middle schoolers and that needs to be called out. Uh, let's see. In, any questions thus far?
Can we just back up?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Of course.
Only because I started. So the mission and vision.
Yes.
That you're striking, it is, it does mirror what's in the elementary book.
It, oh, okay. I must have looked at the wrong thing.
I, I don't know if I'm missing what you want to add. The.
I.
It's not in here.
I didn't put, I think.
Two point O.
I, can I jump? Just, I'm sorry. I think I'd help clarify that. The vision, the purpose and the work in action that Mary struck is correct to strike that. That has all been replaced by our new blueprint. I just think the elementary didn't strike it in there. But the, the blueprint is what the school committee voted on last year that is to replace the old vision and mission.
Okay.
So you are correct in striking that, Mary.
Checked with you before I did it, so I hope so.
I think our, Jenny and Christina just didn't remember to strike it from there.
Okay.
So this is.
That's correct, yeah.
And I thought, I thought I plugged it into the redline copy that you got, but I might, it is, okay.
Some of them are off a page, I think, just because it's like.
Oh, sure. Yep, yep, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Am I good to continue?
Yes.
All right. No, no worries. Page 12, parent guardian responsibilities, we're take, that we're taking out like the, the homework section for the website and, well, no, we're replacing it with a more updated link and adding that families are encouraged to set up notifications in Aspen. We, we give families sort of a tutorial on how to do that on the back to school nights. The teachers will help them with that, but it's a tool within Aspen where families can set up a notification if their child receives a grade below a certain threshold. It's just a helpful thing that if anybody were to run across it, they would see it here. Okay, now we're going to dive into discipline. And this is where things, I'll start with, I'll go in chunks and then we'll get into the big stuff. All right.
You skipped over cell phones.
So the cellphone piece is just reordering how things appear. What page is that? In discipline regulations, we're adding a line about confidentiality. That has been a sticking point a couple of times this year with families who want to know the specific consequences the aggressors are facing if their child is the target. And I, as a parent, I get it, but we have to protect student privacy and can't share those things, so I just wanted it documented somewhere in the handbook. And then cell phones, we have, I'm trying to think, delete cell phones. So we're calling out musical instruments, electronic equipment, and cell phones used to be, used to include cell phones. We're calling cell phones a separate thing now because I think back in the day, they weren't as common and kids were carrying around like Walkmans and like MP3 players. And now it really is just all in a phone, so we're separating those things out.
Actually, what looks like you're striking, you just moved it down.
We're, yeah, we're reorganizing it. It used to be musical instruments, electronic equipment, cell phones and cellphone usage. We're just making it its own section now. Okay. Page 13, discipline options. Oh, these pages are not right. Okay. Our teachers no longer write discipline referral slips. They record their discipline referrals in Aspen or X2, so we're changing that language. It used to be the kids got like a physical slip and now it's all done electronically. When, yeah, here it says when a student receives five referrals, we're replacing that with discipline referrals could result in, you know, we don't want to be tied to specific numbers. It doesn't allow for a lot of flexibility and, well, it doesn't allow for flexibility when you use the hard numbers. So discipline referrals could result in, and then rather than saying if they receive 10 or more referrals, charges may be filed, just continued referrals could result in. We're trying to not keep it, not make it so, so concrete. Okay, so discipline law has changed earlier, earlier this year, which calls on principals and disciplinarians in schools to implement restorative measures whenever possible, as long as it's not in relation to 37H. So 37H is the law that refers to students who are engaging in dangerous behaviors. It's like the big three, and I'll talk about the big three when we get there. So the way our handbook was previously set up was this chart, right? And like, if you do this, the first time you get this, then you get this, then you get that. And that's not really how we operate anymore. Now it's more, if a student is caught vaping, they're enrolled in a vaping diversion program. They take vaping diversion classes during the school day. If a student is, you know, it's much more, we have a whole repository of lessons that we can use to teach students depending on what the infraction is. So if they're involved in harassing another student, they do harassment lessons. If they're bullying another student, they do bullying lessons. These things are often paired with other consequences, but it's not, again, it's not so linear as the first time you do this, you get this, the second time you get that. It's much more responding to the individual child, the individual child's needs and the situation at hand. So we had to kind of find a way to take this and reflect the law and what we actually do. So that is what you will see in the next, in the sections coming up. So we borrowed this language from the high school. Student discipline is confidential and typically progressive. The following is a list of consequences that may be invoked. And then we have our list of things that include, you'll see restorative time. So restorative time is time that could be during the school day, after the school day, where the student is learning, they're engaged in learning opportunities related to the infraction and potentially making things right. You know, we always talk to the kids about, okay, so you've made a mistake, how do you make it right? Sometimes that's, sometimes that's writing an apology, sometimes that's giving a verbal apology, sometimes that's doing some community service. If you're throwing things in the cafeteria, it makes sense that you clean the cafeteria. So those are all restorative pieces of discipline. So we tried to capture some of the things that we're doing in terms of discipline. We added community service. That was not previously listed as an option. I think it's an important option if we're going to build the idea that we are here as a school community. If you do something that harms the community, you need to give back to the community. So, and you know, we're not having kids like scrape gum off of desks or anything, don't worry, we're not, like, we're not into like child labor, but we are into the idea that, you know, if you do something, if you make a withdrawal, you got to make a deposit. All right, so we took, we tried to divide the things that we do into restorative, reflective and educational. And this, I can't say this is exhaustive, but it's a good reflection of the things that we have students do. So written apologies, community service can be restorative, community service can also be reflective. Written reflections are obviously reflective, but they can also be educational. So things kind of can cross over these lines here, but those are the types of interventions we try and put in place when a student has engaged in something that would result in Detention, lunch detention, one period, we're replacing that with suspension with removal. I need the context to understand exactly what that means, and I've lost track of what Okay. Teacher has a right to, oh, okay, so this is, the teacher has the right to remove a student from his or her class or activity for the balance of the teacher's supervision of the student that day. So detention, lunch detention, one period, suspension. The one period suspension really is the part that's getting replaced with suspension with removal. So basically, if a kid is acting out in class, they can send, the teacher can send the kid down to the office for the rest of the period for kind of a cooling off, and then we send them back off to class. That's what that had to do with. Teacher detention, it specifically said the teacher will telephone. We live in a world now where we try to phone, but more often than not, we get a faster, better response with email, so we just changed that to communicates with. Let's see. We are adding, or an unanswered email after answering machine, again, just trying to bring our language more into the current day. Let's see, changing the language around the families of students who do not report for a teacher detention, because I'm a grammarian and it sounded like the family was getting a detention, not the student. Restorative time, we are adding after-school restorative time. So the restorative time piece was really a bugaboo for me because we have two times where we can offer restorative time during the school day, up to three periods. We can't have a child with, out of the, out of the academic environment for more than three periods, but we still can call that restorative time because they're engaged in restorative activities. Then there's the after-school restorative time, where it used to be like, we used to call it after-school detention, but they're really, again, they're engaging in those same activities, the same, I'm not going to have someone do a vaping diversion program after school because the vaping diversion program takes three hours, so I'm going to put them in the room in the school day doing that restorative time. But if they've engaged in something like, you know, throwing food in the cafeteria, they might stay after school, help clean the cafeteria and then go to the, do after-school restorative time and like write an apology to the custodians or something like that. So there's two kinds of restorative time, and this was an attempt to designate which was which. So we have restorative time and in-school restorative time. And really, in-school restorative takes the place of ISS. We no longer really have ISS. That's kind of, the new discipline law kind of took that away from us. We don't have that ability anymore. Not entirely, but for simplicity's sake, we've replaced in-school suspension with in-school restorative time. Let's see. So there is some, you know, tweaking to language of what happens in each of those places. So, you know, restorative time, students will be assigned one or more of the interventions in the chart above. In-school restorative time, students will complete one or more of the interventions from the chart above. If they finish and they still have time left, they'll be allowed to complete schoolwork, but they can't like, you know, sit on their Chromebook and watch YouTube videos. One of the tools in our discipline toolbox is an emergency removal. And what that means is if a student is engaging in behaviors that are dangerous, but we need more time to look into the behaviors before we decide on a disciplinary reaction, we can do an emergency removal and that gives us some time to do an investigation before making a decision. That, emergency removals were not captured anywhere in the handbook, so that's why that's being added here. Okay, now this disciplinary action, the next couple pages in your chart, is my attempt, our attempt at, I, replacing that chart before, like, if this, then boom, boom, boom. So we have discipline, behaviors that could result in progressive discipline, beginning with teacher warnings and advancing up to and including restorative time. So things that could typically result in things like maybe an hour in the restorative room or an after-school detention, but we don't call it detention, it's after-school restorative. And so those are the things that fall into that category. The next category are things that could, that would go up to and including suspension. So you'll notice it's a, you know, an uptick. So fighting insubordination, vandalism, those kinds of things. And then the next are examples of behaviors that involve school administration and police may be notified, consequences may include suspension. So you have assault, you have bias, you have disruption of the school environment, any safety violation, truancy, stealing, threats, anything where we're going to call the SRO, School Resource Officer. And then the last are the big three. And I call them the big three because those are the three things that could result in a student being expelled from school. So those are assault and or battery of a staff member, possession of a weapon in school, on school grounds or in school activities, possession of illegal drugs in school, on school grounds or at a school activity. And so that is consequences and go up to expulsion. So that's kind of how we tried to lay out the, the sort of different tiers of, of behaviors that could result in discipline. That was a lot, so I'll pause, let you process. If you, like, let me know what you think. It was, it was a pretty major overhaul of the discipline section, but as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, it was necessary so that our handbook reflected current law.
And Mr. Superintendent, that's the law you told us about?
In November.
In November, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
We did get a summary from.
Yeah.
Superintendent on how that was a week or so after it changed, I think you.
Yeah.
Because you had a situation you had to deal with, with that new provision in place.
That's right.
Good memory, Dan.
Thank you. I always remember the discipline stuff. I want to see how it changed since it was used on me.
So any questions up to this point for middle school changes?
What would constitute a disruption of school environment? Like, let's think of like the lowest to the, to the highest.
Sure, yeah. So disruption to the school environment is, you have a student who's refusing to comply with adult direction. You know, you need to put your phone away. No.
That wouldn't fall under insubordination?
That would, often times, student behavior hits, ticks a number of boxes. Disruption to the school environment could be something as simple as a kid bringing in like a toy and, you know, it's, it's distracting them and their peers. Really, if you prompt them to put it away and they don't, then it's a disruption of the school environment and it's insubordination. So it's, you know, it can cross over in multiple areas. It could be anything from a food fight to, you know, having a fidget and not using the fidget appropriately.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's like disorderly conduct in the, it's a little similar.
And unfortunately, I still have talking about kids.
I do. I still have. Yeah. I mean, you're welcome to join me.
So when talking about kids, these things do have to be listed specifically to? And probably even dealing with the parents, because they're going to turn around and pull up the handbook when their kid's in trouble.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not when they're here for honorable breakfast.
So. Yeah.
It is something that we do have to revisit yearly, just for other things that come up, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, I'll try and go quickly through the rest. Oh, I made it sound like I had more than I did. I don't have that much, Jill, sorry. Okay. We wanted to add something to the athletic and extracurricular area just to make it clear that students have to take an online concussion prior to, prior to the first practice. Again, living and learning, the online concussion training is relatively new, and this year we had a boatload of kids doing track. And we provided opportunities for the kids to come and do the concussion training prior to the first practice, but if they missed that session, you know, it was putting out a lot of fires, so trying to make sure it's documented ahead of time. And last but not least, apparently, we didn't have information in our handbook about medication. At some point, it got lost, so we wanted to make sure that gets in there. That's an important thing. That's a safety concern, just making sure that medication is handled correctly in our schools. So the other thing that happens is students in middle school, if they don't feel well, will text their mom or dad and say, come get me. And so we need to make sure we have it in the handbook that they need to go through the school nurse, you know? 12 and 13-year-olds don't get to dismiss themselves from school. We have to put eyes on them and let the professional make the call. So that, we added in something about, about that. And that, no, that is the end of it.
Is, what is the page for the?
For the nurse?
No, the concussion.
Concussion is, we are adding the concussion to page 20. Okay, 21.
So that, but I just want to make sure it says, that's a yearly, like, if they do three sports, three season sports.
Yes, it's just once. Yeah, you don't have to, and they do it through, I think it's family ID. Is that right? They do it through family ID, so once it's in there, it's in there. Sort of like, once your physical's done, it's in there. You don't have to provide proof of a physical for each sport you do.
But I think this should say yearly.
Yearly?
Because it says their first practice.
Each student must take the online concussion training. Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll tweak the wording, or do you need me to tweak, tweak it now because you're voting on it?
I'm just reading the whole thing to see if it covers the yearly piece. So at the top where it says each physical exam year, each year.
You're on page 21, you said?
It is 21.
I think I must have a diff, oh. I think I must have a diff, oh, you have the redlined copy, I don't. So my page numbers are off. Okay, I've got it. Each student is required to have at least one physical exam each year to participate in all athletic organizations. And I think this is where we were going to slide in, each student must take the online concussion training each year, once per year?
I think that would cover it.
Yeah. Should I say each year or once per year?
Uh, once per year.
Once.
Once per year. Okay.
And then leaving it where you put the redline, prior to their first practice, because once per year, prior to their first practice of whatever season, whatever that, once per year is.
Yep, yep.
First school year.
Okay.
It is a calendar year.
Documents?
It is a calendar year. I'm not going to say how I know that, but.
Can I add a piece?
Sure.
And in case, Mary, you said something important that I want to just highlight. You referenced a medication piece that was missing from the handbook. If there is something that is missing and an issue that does come up, because we've had that occasionally, we always defer to school committee policy. So we'll go back and look up what, what the school committee policy is on any particular issue if it's not referenced specifically in the handbook. And the other thing that's really helpful is protocols within the departments. So athletics has a set of protocols, the health department has a set of protocols, so, you know, for, for things like, you know, diabetes and insulin and inhalers and, you know, medication dispensing and all those things. So I just, as much as I know that principals try to make it as all-inclusive as they can, if there is ever something missing and an issue does occur, we can defer to those other two pieces. And we've done it that, with success in the past.
Or the law, like it changed in the fall?
That's right. Have to lean into that, because these have to be under those provisions.
Any other questions for me?
And with that, you are done?
I am. Sorry it took so long.
Any questions for?
No, now I'm really feeling the.
You're in the spotlight. All right. So are we comfortable with a motion to approve the middle school changes for 23, 23, I almost said 34?
We're not changing it for that long, no.
Well, it says that.
Oh!
As I was reading it.
Uh, yeah.
23, 24.
I make a motion to accept the changes as presented with the correction of the dates.
So motion made by Tara for the middle school changes, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tara. Any other comments, concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you for the time and effort for that.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks. So we did our major.
Congratulations, Jill.
Well, I'm still on the agenda, so it's okay. You'll see me a lot today. All right. So beyond the school calendar and school committee, I noticed we do have to update that, and there is an error in who our title line coordinator is, but we'll, that's stuff that we can run a day. We have an additional piece on our National Honor Society. They wanted to define a little bit more on what admission looks like, so that is right from their bylaws, and that has nothing to do with us, it's just we put that in there, and it's more of a clarification piece, and that's great.
Sorry, one second. Is it updated on this copy that we have, or is it?
The handbook change, the page 17, let's find it. I have the good copy, as Linda wrote.
So what we have here is the new National Honor Society?
The original, I think.
Once these get.
Right, yes.
Approved, they'll be added in.
Yes, this is on page 17 in the, in that packet that you have, yes, it will, it says that on my, on my updated copy. Do you have like a double scratch thing?
No, I just, in the past, Linda's given, when we've had the changes, we've only had them here, and then they've been made after they've been approved, but this year we were redlining, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
For streamlining.
Yep.
One new thing initiative this year, we had a group of seniors come and ask if they could wear hats in school. We piloted it, they did a great job, we said, sure. So we took that out, we took the omission of hats, so they're allowed to wear hats in school, they've done a great job. They are not allowed to wear hoodies though, because you can't see from the back, so they have complied beautifully, and so that was a student initiative that we made that change.
Sorry, what constituted the good job, as you said?
We were looking for kids screwing around, popping them off, throwing them at each other, sitting in, you know, just really nonsense, and they did not have that at all. They were very respectful, followed the policy. It was led by a senior, a bunch of senior boys, senior initiative by them, and they kind of policed themselves, so we felt that we could continue along with that policy, relaxing that policy.
Thank you.
Similar to the discipline that was mentioned previous to me, we have updated and added our I Decide program that has been, I meant to grab the statistics, but that has been a successful program. In adding this, I think, Dr. DeFalcio, you mentioned that our suspensions have been reduced by 70%, which does not mean that we are not suspending, it just means that we are also looking at alternatives to suspension. We suspend when necessary, we suspend when it's repeated, we document, and continue with a number of different things. So we wanted to make sure what you found on the pieces here are just being explicit about what discipline could look like. It is still up to the discretion of administration. But that is all of the amended pieces. Similar to using the half-day internal suspension to deal with the change in the law, that has been something that we have used, particularly with our I Decide program. Or we've done it after-school as well. So that's been also very successful. And the last of it is just clarification, again, on cell phones. Wanting to bold and highlight this, I will note that in our student agendas, the discipline piece, the cellphone piece does appear, so that they're not looking at all of this. They are actually looking at what the rules that would apply to them on a daily basis would look like.
Also be removing all references to anything and all things COVID-19 from every handbook, every paragraph, every sentence. Forever.
The back of the, most of the handbook.
That'll all be coming out. Of everybody's language.
You're like, not coming back or something when you say that?
I know.
No, no, he said forever, we have it on record, so no matter what happens, it's not coming back.
That's right.
I will do, I will say, because you mentioned that, that our portrait of the graduate is not in here, it's on the website, I, we didn't put this in there, so we will add that because that is what, the essence of what runs our school and what drives our decision-making, and that probably will be on top of the index, front and center.
For the portrait of the graduate will be on all elementary, hot minute, and high school.
Yeah, consistent.
That's already working. Everyone coming together?
Yes, huge.
All right. Any questions for the high school handbook changes as presented?
Like I said, we did our major overhaul last year when I came on board and moved some things around, so it is a lighter lift than the middle school.
So looking for a motion to approve the 23, 24 handbook changes for the high school as presented.
So, second.
Motion made by Ted and second by Dan. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. See you back here in a minute.
Okay, you go to the next item. Moving on to our 2023 summer programming update, Mary Collinio's gonna just do a brief overview, and then the principals are going to give a quick overview in terms of their novels and what the summer work packets will look like. We have a lot going on in July and August.
Yes, we do.
Very excited about.
So briefly, our summer programs are going to be going on from July 10th until August 25th, off and on. We have the first one that we had last year with Millville for literacy and math enrichment. This year, the Millville program, summer programs will be at the complex, and as well as, we're going to keep two buildings instead of all of them, so the middle school will be at the high school as well. But we do have a new, a new program as well, and Christina has been working closely with the, with the police department on that summer safety.
So we are, our SROs went to some trainings, and we're going to kind of do a version, and we're going to do summer safety. So we're going, we've got a few things we're going to talk about, it's like bicycle safety, pool safety, internet safety, and kind of just for pre-K to H. So obviously, we're going to make it appropriate for them, like wearing your helmet when you're riding, and just overall safety in general, right? Don't swim alone, all those things. So our Millville SRO Officer Gould and the Blackstone SRO, Joe Nimsick, and then they actually had a third officer that went to the training, so he is available to help as well. And it's just kind of just teaches students about safety in general.
Dr. Romkows will have her 21st Century Learning Center again as well, which will be, again, math and literacy enrichment, and then an additional piece with activities. And then we'll have middle school credit recovery and high school credit recovery, that will be more, more of a project-based type of thing, and separate, it will be separate for each, for each school. And then for, for myself, we will also have middle and high school enrichment camps, so music, art, sports, things like that. We have a new one for ELL enrichment that we will be bringing in the elementary and pretty much the middle school children that are Ls, and giving a language acquisition. And first, like, let's, for example, if we had the, the middle school, we would give language acquisition, and at the same time, the elementary students would be getting math, and then we'd flip. So that's where, that's a new, a new program that we are starting this summer.
And I think I mentioned before, when I talked about our English Language Honor Program, we are currently, I think we started the year about 30 students, we're at 47. So it's really nice to see the kids gaining both the social and the academic language, so this summer will give them, be able to continue through, you know, really focusing on their needs. So we're really happy to be able to introduce that this summer.
So we're also in, as you can see on, on the list, that we will have lunch provided for the, for any of the students that want to stay, and, and we are, also have applied for that grant again.
Mary, they don't, they don't have this copy?
Oh, they don't?
Yeah, so you'll, you'll want to just explain what's on there, and we'll, I'll scan it and send it to them tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I can send it to everybody tomorrow. Not a problem.
So for a grant for the Acceleration Academy that we had last year as well, so we're in the process of applying for that grant.
And that's the jumpstart before the school year starts.
Yeah, so that one would be the one in August.
Can I add a few things?
Sure.
So in addition to that, and then I know Jill, you'll talk about the ESY, but we are in the process of developing a wraparound services for the students that we know are going to need a lot of support over the summer, like we've done in the past, so helping to identify those students, what their needs are, putting the care plans in place, and then having the follow-up over the summer to make sure that when we reconvene in September or August, students have been well-supported over the summer for the issues that we're trying to address. So we're excited about that. And again, Mary mentioned the summer feeding, we are going to run it out of the complex. We're going to set up some picnic tables outside, so parents, if you're tuning in, if you're at work, don't worry, if your kids have bikes and they want to ride their bikes down to the complex, free of charge, we'll be able to feed the kids lunch, and then through the federal government, get the reimbursements that we need for that, so we're really excited about that in terms of being able to, again, just continue to feed the community. We have to do it a little bit different, we can't do the grab-and-go style that we used to do. So, you know, the students, so the kids would have to come to us, but also be a good opportunity for them to get out of the house, come off the basketball court, jump on their bikes, assuming kids still do that, I see kids riding bikes all over, but, you know, ride down to the complex, they can sit down, and, you know, pick a table outside, have some lunch. It'll be a nice kind of way to check in with the kids too informally. And then we're also partnering with the Boys and Girls Club again this summer, although this time, they hired one of our staff, so the faculty member that we hired last year to work there, they actually brought her on their staff, which is great, the partnership's been awesome. And they also have one of our kitchen managers running their cooking program, so she's going to be working for the Boys and Girls Club this summer again, which is great. I mean, that's how that kind of back and forth and mutual support is so important. So we're excited about, we're excited about that as well. And then, ESY, do you want to talk about that show?
Sure. So our extended school year for our students with special needs, so during the school year, during breaks, our, any student who's on IEP, the teams, when they convene, they consider, is this a student who requires extended services through the summer? It's not just kind of a drop-in thing, it's specific services relative to special education. So our team of teachers, our OTs, our speech and language, they collect data throughout any breaks during the year, it could be a weekend, it could be over, you know, a February break, a winter break, but they collect that data to say, how are our kids, you know, are they sliding back significantly, and is it taking them a long time to recoup those skills that they may have lost, and is their overall rate of learning at a pace that it takes them a very long time to catch up? So the staff has already sent in our names, and we have approximately now, I had, as of today, I can't tell you what it's going to be tomorrow, about 283 students on IEPs, and about 25% of those students, about 70, were actually recommended as required for having an ESY program over the summer. So we're in the process of reaching out to families, staff does a really nice job putting together what those focus areas are. It's not just anything random, we don't say, it's just reading, we do whatever. It's very focused on the IEP goals, and teachers put that information together, the IEPs are put together, we're in the process of hiring the staff. All of those programs will take place at the complex, so, you know, all of our elementary will be together this year and be able to take advantage of the lunch as well. We are trying to throw in, a couple of years ago, we tried, we did throw in a little bit, we tried to do a little, maybe a little PE in there, or something for the kids to be active, because they can still use their gross motor skills, their fine motor skills, so we're looking to add that again, because the kids really enjoy doing that. So we're looking, looking forward to that, just bringing staff on board. But again, that's, that's a nice number, about 25% of our students who are, are needed. When we look through those numbers, just so you know, we also have a list of those who don't need it, but those who might benefit. So once we look at those numbers who are coming, if we have some room, we're going to open it up more to some of the other kids who just may benefit and might want to have that opportunity.
And last summer, we had over 500 students participate in some program, summer programming, so we are very active in the summer here, which is great, that's the way it should be.
It's like a third of the district.
Yeah, yeah, we've done a really nice job of getting students involved, and that doesn't include our athletic clinics, which I know Jill will be working with Sam Yoder and our, our high school athletic leaders to run the different camps, and, you know, soccer and field hockey, and football ran a couple times last year, running groups, so we're going to look at all kinds of athletic camps again, to drop in to help kind of build that pipeline and get the kids interested. I hope, I hope we have a big running group with, with all the track kids that were around the middle school. A lot, a lot of opportunity there, for sure.
And I know Jason mentioned the wraparound services, and which is really great, having so many kids here, it, a lot of those kids may be on our list. We had a very productive meeting with the high school today, to sit down, talk about those kiddos, what they could need, develop a plan, and I'll be doing that with each building, to go through some of those students, and just to say, where will they be? Do they have services already in place? Are they going to approach? Are they going to a program? But it's really nice that we have so much going on in the district, that it's, you know, it's just what everyone's doing, so to be able to keep those kids on our radar.
What do the signups look like for the enrichment pieces that you mentioned? The arts and, are they going to, like, Google Docs before school ends?
Tomorrow. So we were waiting for, for this, and so right now, we have sent out emails to the teachers for posting, posting to see who would like to participate, and, and also, some of them have come up with things that they want, like, so Art has already come up with some programs and different things like that. So tomorrow, it will go out.
Okay.
We wanted to give the school committee the information first and then get it out to the public.
Yeah.
I, I remember the feedback from the last summer, and it was very positive. So I'm glad we were able to do that. Any questions for the summer?
Do you need books, or I just stay up here?
Oh, please, yeah. Before we, that's probably a good way to do that, Christina.
So for our, we're keeping the same books we've done the last couple of years. The district had purchased through grant money, some purchases, we have multiple copies, enough for every student, and they will have, each grade level has a different book with a tic-tac-toe board, and they can choose the activities that they wanna do. So Kay is gonna do Chica Chica Boom. Grade one is going to do Bernstein Bears by the Sea. Two is going to do Flat Stanley and the Lost Treasure. So they have different activities, hands-on activities, kind of oral activities, so it kind of meets the needs of all of our learners. Oh, there we go, Jenny brought it. And their tic-tac-toe board, so they, they choose what they wanna do. There's nothing that, since they have to do a certain amount, but it helps kind of prevent that summer slide. They will also have math, yep, activities too. Again, their games, their combination games, their activities that they can do with families, they can do by themselves. There's drawing activities to do with shapes and colors and just a whole bunch of activities to kind of keep their skills going. And we have some online pieces, so they link to like Google Slides, and so they have to like count how many are on a sheet, and how many of the square do you see? And it's, I don't know if you've seen them on, online where they have like squares, and there's a whole bunch of little other squares inside of it, and you have to count how many. So there's things like that, just to kind of keep those skills reinforced for the pre-K to.
Grade three is, they're reading The Summer Camp from The Black Lagoon, and grade four is Stone Fox. And grade five will be Insignificant Events in the Life of a Cactus. And they are chosen by the teachers, and we have, we both have all the packages ready to go. And when, next Friday, grade two will be visiting the complex, and we'll be passing out those summer packet.
And it's for kindergarten, our incoming kindergarten, they'll get them at screening. So when they come in to complete their dial screener with the current kindergarten teachers, they will get their book on their way out. And that doesn't have any tic-tac-toe, it's more of just a family read to encourage the families to read.
I have to say, insignificant events of a life of a cactus. Sounds like a book that you would be reading. I would see you on that. Like that video, the video from last year, yes.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Off to my anniversary dinner.
Happy anniversary!
31 years. How many?
31.
Congratulations.
It'll be the last. I have a good one, but he has better.
Thank you.
All right. So insignificant events in the life of a cactus, by the way, is an excellent read. I highly recommend it.
And I'd prefer Flusenly.
Only if Jason reads it to us.
My kids did that all in second grade, and you had families all over sending it.
I was gonna, I was gonna explain the title, but then I remembered that I told, I told Jill to kick me if I talk too much. Okay. Sixth grade, our incoming sixth graders are gonna get a copy of Escape from Chernobyl. So we've got a little bit of drama, a little bit of recent history, great book. And our sixth graders going to seventh grade will have a choice of Refugee by Alan Gratz, Esperanza Rising, or by Pam Munoz Ryan, or Chains by Laurie Hulse Anderson. These are the same choices students had last year. And eighth grade will have a choice of A Night Divided by Jennifer Nielsen, The Running Dream by Wendellin Van Dranen, or The Boy Who Harnesses the Wind. The only thing I'm adding to this list is an option for our eighth graders. In conversation with our current eighth grade English teacher, we landed on the title Wolf Hollow by, oh my goodness, my name, it's gonna, it's the only one out there called Wolf Hollow, and I can't believe I forgot the author's name. But it's a historical fiction. It's set just before, just at the start of World War II, Pennsylvania, and it's a young girl who deals with, thank you Lauren Wolf, you're good, you've got my back. So this young girl lives on a farm, and a girl moves in with her grandparents, and this girl is a horrible bully, and she's trying to figure out how to deal with the bully, and then she, the bully disappears, and all eyes in town look to this sort of reclusive World War I veteran, who's kind of strange, and they think that he's done something to this girl, but our, our protagonist knows that that's not true, and she has to figure out what to do about it.
Drama.
Drama, but it's such, it's a good book, and it really, it, it has a lot of wonderful lessons to it. So those are, that's what we're reading. I'm excited. I love books.
Recovering English teacher.
Recovering, never. Never recover. The high school has chosen the theme of Finding Your Way. So with that as a theme, the English department has chosen four books to choose, and all of our children will be able to pick whatever book they would like to read. There is one fiction called If I Stay. I will tell you that that is a very popular one. Forty percent of our students have selected that. It's a good book. Then we have a sci-fi called Dragon Song. So that will be another one that students can opt for. The autobiography biography is The Other Wes Moore. Very excited about that. I've picked it up several times at Barnes &amp; Noble, but I've never made it in, so now it will. And then we have a graphic novel by a local author, and that's called Hey Kiddo. We always have a graphic novel in all of that, that is the second most popular choice. And the, I know the English department is looking to see what they can do to bring the author here to speak. It's a little pricey, but they're, they're gonna try to work their magic. So he is an author from Worcester. So that will be very exciting. So we'll be ordering those shortly, and that includes our rising ninth graders. We'll also have that choice.
Maybe we can split the cost of it. My kiddos could read Sunshine, your kiddos could read Hey Kiddo, and so you can bring them all together. We'll talk.
And so they'll be given these books before the left?
Correct. It's on our, it's on our Esser, our Esser money.
Yeah.
End of that third year.
So then they all can participate and?
And then they work this into the English curriculum. We don't have an assignment like a, this all gets done in the, in the, in the English department.
Hollow.
Very good. Any questions for our middle school or high school?
So that was just a bit about our summer programming. So as you can see, we've got a lot going on in the months of July and August, and I will scan in the summer '23 update that Mary was going over, and I'll email it to everybody tomorrow to make sure that you have, you have a copy of that. And I'll keep you posted on the grant for the Acceleration Academy. I'll let you know how that continues to move forward. We have to submit that by June 9th, I believe it's the 9th, and we're well on our way putting that together. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Everybody. Just briefly, I wanted to give an update on the Millville Elementary School water, so everybody has a sense of kind of where that is. We did take delivery of our first truckload last week. It came at the very end of the week. There was some kind of back and forth between the DEP and the town and the water operator that had to be worked out. That all got resolved in terms of a particular process they needed to follow for approval. So that was set. The tank was drained, the water went in, and then we are in process of taking our second delivery. Actually, I think it came in yesterday, Denise, was it yesterday?
Yes.
I believe, yep. So, I didn't hear you.
We have a second.
Right, that's when the second delivery came in, yeah. So that system is going well, and we have now monitoring of that water.
So we are monitoring that water?
You will be happy to know that the PFAS levels are seven, which is good, I thought I'd share that, because that was a big part of the conversation at our last DEP joint meeting. And the Henshaw is the company that we're working with to deliver the water. They've been a great vendor to work with, frankly, really responsive and cooperative. So we seem to have a system running, at least for the next few weeks.
So the well is off?
We are not using the well water.
It is off, though?
It is lime.
Yep, we are not using it. Yep.
The pump is not pumping?
It is not, we are not getting any of that water into our fresh spring water. And now that we're on our second delivery, that second, that spring water is running through the system.
Hand washing, cooking?
Everything, yeah. The kids are, no, yeah, their bubbles are still off, and, you know, at the end of the day, I don't think anyone will probably let the children rip the water there, but.
Bringing it in.
They could theoretically at this point, right, if they, if they wanted to, but we still have things wrapped in. But so we're using it for our cooking and hand washing.
Are we gonna have enough of the funds that were offered by the town of Millville to cover through the rest of the year?
So we just went through this yesterday, that's a great question. We thought we would need a delivery a week. It's looking like it's gonna be a delivery about every seven days, six or seven, six or seven days, and that's, I know that's a week, but when you put the weekend in there, there, there is still, so like last, last week, we had a delivery, I believe it was Friday, and then we had another delivery yesterday. Right now, we should, we should come right to that $15,000 mark.
We, we're not paying for this, are we, so?
I have not paid a bill. We're gonna send the invoice to the town of Millville.
Because it's actually the town of Millville that has to order the water, I would imagine.
That is correct.
They have to order the water. They have to make the, they should be, the bill should be going directly to the town of Millville.
Understood. No, I agree, I hear you, yeah. I agree with you completely. We are not, we are not.
I got some bills from Blackstone I'll send you if you want.
We are not paying, we are not paying.
I, I think it's important to share that DEP had to make that clear, that the water had to be ordered from Millville.
Right.
From the town, not us.
Yes.
So with that being said, I think it, it's also important to share that Millville has asked, I guess it's in the opinion of the town administrator, that based on our regional agreement, he isn't sure any, that, that the town should be paying the water expenses anymore. And I just wanna make it very clear to this committee that, so, so a few emails came out after our meeting last Monday, and we are at a point where our attorney is going to speak to their attorney to clarify all of the language from our regional agreement and the lease of the building. But I want all of you to know that never have we paid for any water cleaning, any water expense in that facility. I believe he's trying to say it's an operational cost at this, but.
Yes, so, yeah. What, what we have been going back and forth on, and we just stopped the back and forth, and we'll let the attorneys have their conversations. The initial discussion was EMR, you pay the bill, we'll reimburse you. My response to that was, no, we are not doing that. We are gonna send you the invoice. The response to that was, well, like we did with all of the COVID relief materials and things that you ordered, reimburse you for, for your expenses, and I said, that is a very good point, but this is not our expense. This is your expense, we're not going to pay your bill, and then have you pay us back for paying your bill. You will pay your bill. And then the response was, that's where we don't agree. So we are not paying it, we will be sending the invoices.
And, and beyond that, the, the town administrator at this point is trying to say that the cleansing of the water is an operational expense. So I, I think it's important that we're all aware of this possible rising situation with, I, I think it would be different if the water wasn't coming from a well, and if it was town water and you're paying that water sewer bill, the ins and outs of your building. This is just to get acceptable water to the facility. There's a very big difference.
Can I add to that? Because there's a misconception too, that I do wanna clarify this publicly, because it was stated at their, I think it was March 21st.
So there's a March 20th meeting, if you have time?
Should watch it. It was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
It was stated at that meeting about an hour and a half in, I think, that the district pays Blackstone for their water. That is not true for.
He was asked.
The complex. We do pay the water for the middle and high school. Those are district-owned buildings, but for the town-owned buildings, the towns have always paid for the water, for their own buildings, and the district pays the towns for.
For the supply.
For these buildings, yes, as part of the lease, so just as.
If I, if I may.
Yes.
All the water in both towns comes from wells. Millville's gotta understand, like, Blackstone's water just is not in pipes that go to the school. They come out of wells. Same, a public water supply is a public water supply, whether it's for one building or it's for the whole town of Blackstone. The town of Blackstone, the Blackstone Water Division sends a bill of use, of water use, for the Kennedy Maloney School Complex to the town of Blackstone. The taxpayers of the town of Blackstone.
They're the owner?
Pay for the water, and have always paid for the water bill for the Kennedy Maloney School process, complex, because we are the owners of the building through the lease agreement. The, 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 the town administrator of the town of Millville may wanna just open up the regional agreement and read it, before he shoots off comments on who owes what. The, the town of Millville is responsible for providing clean, safe drinking water in their lease agreement with the school district. The town of Blackstone's Water Division sends a bill to the school district for the two school-owned buildings, the district-owned buildings and the town of Blackstone. That's this building and the high school. Okay? And the district assesses that back to the towns, in the budget, it's, it's in the budget, and that's how that's paid for. But the town of Black, people of Millville have never paid a bill, a water bill, for the Kennedy Maloney School Complex. It's the taxpayers, it's not even the water rate payers, it's the taxpayers of the town of Blackstone that pay that bill for the complex, and still do today, even though, even, even with the new modified regional agreement where the kids are going from both towns to these buildings, the town of Blackstone is still paying under their lease agreement to the, to, to the district. They're still paying for the water bill, we still cut the grass, maintain the, you know, our.
As is the town of Millville, paying for their water. They, I believe they have a $45,000 yearly budget for MES water operations, and that is all Millville taxpayer money, because it is a Millville-owned building. So just like you're saying, so you're right, and in, in the regional agreement and in the lease, there is language to cover that. So we are going to let our attorneys.
Yeah, yeah, and the only point I'm making is.
We have never paid.
Right.
Any of our water operations out of our district budget ever. We have never paid for water in the complex out of our district budget. So they kind of equal each other out.
And, and that statement wasn't a statement like towards the town of Millville, it was a statement towards the town administrator for the town of Millville stating that he doesn't think that, he thinks the district should just, to say cleansing of a water is an operational cost.
Presenting it as an operational cost.
Yeah, that's a stretch.
And I guess we're gonna have to let the attorneys define that word. I, I don't. And I guess we're going to have to let the attorneys define that word, I don't know.
And I reviewed last, last week again with our, with your counsel, the lease agreement and the regional agreement, and she was abundantly clear that we are doing this correctly. The way that we, the setup that we have right now is exactly how it should be.
Whose counsel did you review?
School committee.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so but just to re-solidify the point.
It's correct, I'm sure.
We are well within the right of the language in that contract, which is what it is, so. So just wanted to give an update on that, and then we are attending the Board of Selectmen meeting.
On June 5th.
June 5th, so...
What date is that?
It's a Monday.
What is it, June 1st?
June 5th.
And that's when they're going to talk about, she invited us to possibly be there. So we'll hope for the best with that process.
Okay, to move on to the next. So the next item is, we have an updated Director of Food Service job description for you this evening to review and hopefully approve. I'll have Denise go over the fundamentals of the position, but the short kind of headline version is our prior food service director, because of COVID and all the feeding, everything we're doing, I'm sure you recall, we moved that from a part-time to a full-time position. We want to move this back to a part-time position. We're looking at 30 hours, but have a year-round for summer feeding and the things that we were discussing this evening regarding programming. But Denise, do you want to go over some of the specifics of the description?
Sure. We reached out to other areas and reviewed what the districts are using and the salary structures and the time commitments that other schools of our same size and feeding capacities have to come up and develop with this budget, I mean with this budget, with this job description. We started off, the top thing is the education, the education is a bachelor's degree. We're looking for someone who has some speciality in nutrition, because that is the directive of the program, has some business background also, and as we continue now, we'd like them to have five years of experience. Certifications that are necessary and required for the position are listed there also. And then we get down into their duties. Their duties, they run a lot of different systems, so not only do they submit things for reimbursement through the state, they also run a menu and they track all the nutritional values and they do inventory. They manage all the student payments through the different portals. So there's a lot of different software programs that they use and online things, so that's listed in here. As you continue on through the job description, consulting and working with everyone here, ordering the food and working with the USDA and the regulatory agencies that they work with, so that's listed in here that they have to be doing. Additionally, they work, each one of the buildings has a manager and they have a full staff that's working in these kitchen areas, and they monitor all the time that they're, they do the scheduling and they develop the budget. So that's also factored in here. The timeline that we've given for this would be a 30-hour a week position, not a 20-hour. And it's up to a 30-hour position because sometimes during the summer months, there might not be 30 hours that are necessary. So we have some flexibility built into that so that they could work less if not necessary to be there. Do you want to have any questions or feedback?
Shifting a little bit back to what it was with COVID and the community feeding.
There was a lot of thoughtful analysis when we developed this job description of determining what they actually do in putting that and building that into the job description. So we took out, you know, simple mundane tasks of, you know, doing timesheets as to, you know, making it more general of overview of what's going to be done within the position.
So we will need to approve this job description and you release the hire immediately?
Yes, if approved this evening, we'll post.
Okay.
Right away.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the job description for the Food Service Director of the district.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Chuck, and second by...
No, a second.
Any discussion or questions about the job description or changes? Okay, so all those in favor of approving the Food Service Director job description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Thank you for that. That concludes my report.
All right, moving on to the report of the Business Office.
So I'm going to give some context and then Denise, I'll turn it over to you to go through some of the specifics, if that's all right?
Yes.
But I want to share a couple just quick things because as a school committee, you will see underneath the Business Office report some standing items, some new agenda items. You may recall in, those that were here in March, I think it was March, when we did our last round of policy revisions with Tammy, and we were going through some of the financial sections of our policy, of the school committee policy manual. There were a couple of policies that were reviewed and approved and very important, as we've been talking about the legality of all kinds of things tonight, to obviously include the finances into that. We have to put forward to the school committee, we being the leadership and administration, to the school committee approval for any grants, financial gifts. And so what you will see is, as we continue to write grants and get them in, in the past, we've always discussed them, so you always knew what the grant was, what it was used for. But moving forward, and I don't mean entitlement grants like Title, you know, Title I or Title II-A or those types of grants, IDEA, that's not what I mean, but for instance, there's one on here tonight that I'll talk about in a second. But anytime we have a special grant that we're applying for, will need to come before the school committee to formally accept the grant. It's a fiscal piece, so we, in order for us to execute on any dollars like that, we want to make sure that the school committee not only has knowledge but votes and approves it. So you'll see, you know, over the months ahead, grants added to school committee agendas for us to talk about. The other thing that's important is our student activities funds. So when we have a class, a graduation class, that has been gone for two or more years, we can no longer use those resources without school committee approval. And so as we're cleaning up, I should say Denise is working very closely with Jill and cleaning up the student activities accounts, you'll see things like this come in front of you to discuss and then approve. In this particular case, we're going to move money to Student Council, but that could change, you know, year to year. Also, along those lines are clubs that are no longer in existence. So for instance, we have the Future Business Leaders of America that has money left, and we have the Students Against Drunk Driving Club that has money left. So in order for Jill to be able to use that money, we have to bring it forward to the school committee for discussion and approval for those funds to be used. So Denise, let me turn over to you for the specifics.
Sure. So as we were evaluating all of the activity accounts and going through what they are and what they've been done for, we have a class of 2019 that still has residual funds of $229.64. And due to school committee policy, after two years, they have to be coming in front of the school committee in order to reallocate them to another, back to the student activity account and then to be reallocated to another organization or a club that's going to be utilizing it. The class of 2020 has $2,270.87. The Future Business Leaders of America has $844.03. SAD, Students Against Drunk Driving, has $371.70. The total is $3,716.24 that we're looking to remove from these specific activities and clubs and put them back to the general fund for reallocation. I'll entertain a motion.
If, I will, I will make a motion, I just have a...
Question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So the request is to transfer the student activity funds to the Student Council?
No, the request is to allocate it back to the student activity account, taking it from these specified activities and then putting it into the general fund. A reallocation will be coming up, someone else will be asking for that.
I think Jill, and it's worded that way on the agenda, because I think Jill wants it for Student Council.
Yes, so she, so it would go back to the general fund. And just as a note of what's going to happen, at the beginning of the school year, we will come to you with all the student activity accounts for your approval. We'll be explaining what they are, what balances carried forward from the previous year. This is just a cleaning up item for this year before we start doing that for next school year.
So the request was that the money, the funds benefit all students? And the Student Council is, in my eyes, the best way to do that? And the school council would benefit from that to be able to put on what the dances that we do and all of the events, activity that we're doing tomorrow? So that was the most widespread organization.
And if I could just follow up with, and that's a great explanation, I was just trying to get an understanding of it. And the class of 2020 had like $2,300.
That was, that was during the pandemic year, there was an, and some activities didn't get to happen?
I was just saying, I'm surprised it's not higher because they did not have prom, they did not have a class trip. But I believe they gave gift cards to each kid. I believe they...
Yes, we did.
Basically reimbursed them with another form of gift. So, and then, and I did lean over and say that to Tara, and even 21, the kids walked away with Amazon gift cards because they didn't have prom. They didn't have, they had a, their formal banquet, remember? That was, and they couldn't bring anyone and there was maybe no food, I don't even remember. It was, it wasn't a prom, but they dressed up and...
They pretended it was their...
But they got some money back, so there must have been an even larger amount given back to the 20. But I'm just surprised there's still that much left when they reimbursed them.
Well, on the positive note, Jason said there will never be any more COVID policies in these things, so we... So with that being said, I'll make a motion to transfer the amount of $3,716.24 from the student activities funds to the Student Council.
Is that the right motion?
I'm reading it.
It has to go to the general fund first.
Do we need to do each one separately?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, I'll redraw that motion, I'll make a motion to transfer the $3,716.24 from these various accounts to the general fund.
Okay, so motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. And that will move as listed the amounts into the general fund. And then Denise, you're saying we will have to make another motion to move it to Student Council or...
Yes, correct.
And we can't do that tonight?
We can.
Madam, it is kind of, it kind of is on the agenda, so Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to...
We got to vote on this one first.
Oh, sorry.
So motion is on the floor to transfer the money, a total amount of $3,716.24 to the general fund. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so that money is moved.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to transfer $3,716.24 from the general fund to the Student Council.
So motion made by Dan to transfer $3,716.24 from the general fund to the Student Council. We need to be specific at BMR.
Student Council account.
High school Student Council.
High school Student Council, there we go. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara.
I do have a question.
And your question?
Jill, you mentioned like dances and stuff, that's what they would, they would use that towards?
Well, that's one of the things that they sponsor, they do the homecoming dance and that's their biggest fundraiser, but then they do winter carnival and they provide certain supplies to all of the classes, the banners, the tapestry that they paint on, among other things, and all the other things, yep, for pep rally. That's been their biggest thing, they do do leadership activities as well that they're working for. And then they do general like fun purchases type things that would benefit everybody. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, so you have $3,716.24 more than you had about five minutes.
That is very exciting, they can put it on the picnic table.
We'll have pumpkins for years to come.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
And then backing up to the grants and financial gifts. The ST Math Grant, just to give everyone a quick overview of what that is, that is a grant that the complex has written. Actually, you'll see Millville Elementary on here shortly too, because they also have written it in the amount of $10,000. It is, ST Math is a conceptual math supplement, so it works really nicely with our math program, but it teaches a lot of the concepts behind the procedure. Most of us learn procedural math, like first, then, next, finally, kinds of things, and our kids still do that. But the conceptual piece is a really nice supplement to those kids that are more visual, more abstract. They, you know, can see that any, anything can be a whole that you can divide into equal parts, right? Like when you're teaching fractions, so they did write a $10,000 grant and was awarded to the school, so we'll need the committee to approve that and accept it.
And we appreciate that. So looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of the ST Math Grant in the amount of $10,000.
So moved.
Motion made by Ted and second by Tara. All good things to come, any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
Great. The next item is a discussion on small capital projects. And in your packet, you have essentially a spreadsheet. And Denise and Scott have been working with a couple of our members from our capital, our larger capital planning committee, to really discuss the priorities that we've been looking at, again, smaller in nature, but of capital work that needs to be done. So what's in front of you is essentially a list of options. Scott, Denise and I have had a lot of conversation around this and have really landed in a few places that we think really need to be done, frankly. And so I'll highlight those, the little asterisks you can see, we're still waiting on estimates to come back on a few things. But only one of those items are one that we are actually recommending we move forward with. But the first recommendation is the, from Industrial Burner, it's the $14,640. And that's a project that needs to happen here in this building. And it's essentially replacing, if you look at the boiler room, it's replacing some of the chimney rot and the piping rot that needs to be, it just, it has to be done, it's leaking. We were able to kind of eke through this year with some patching. But one of the things that Scott, Denise and I discussed is like, we really need to get that done, that's got to be rebuilt. This is a building that obviously we're keeping for a very, very long time, so we need to continue to invest in keeping that up. The next item is actually under BMR, and that is the repair of the AC to the data room. As you know, all of your servers and your equipment need to stay cool. Those throw off a significant amount of heat. And so what we would like to do is replace the mini split, and I think Scott talked about this last week, or at our last meeting, actually, but replace the mini, the mini split AC unit in that server room to keep the equipment cool. Again, that is not equipment that we want burning out in a can. Not having an AC unit can, in that space, can actually shorten the lifespan of the equipment. Again, very urgent, that's something we definitely need to do. If you look underneath the F650, the hydraulics, that's removing the rotted dump body. And again, I know that Scott has talked about this in prior reports, but that replacement cost actually did come in around $2,200. So there is definitely a need to do that, at least before next.
The F650?
Yes.
$2,200?
$2,200.
Oh.
Do you have that number on your, Denise, that was the number Scott gave me?
Yes, he gave it, but we didn't get to put it on there.
Oh, I see, okay, I want to make sure I had it correct, that was the number Scott had given me. And he unfortunately can't be here this evening, so otherwise he'd be giving this report. But, so we are looking for that to be replaced, that needs to be done before the winter, it doesn't have to be done now, but if we have an opportunity to do it now, it would make sense to just get it out of the way. And then the last item is, if you look at underneath BMR, the, that should say field, the handicap access for the track in the football field.
Ooh.
Scott and I and Denise have been looking at a way to safely put in a one-way horseshoe, because you know, Lincoln Street's a very busy street, but to look, to try to find a manner for putting in a one-way horseshoe-shaped driveway with parking on the side so we can open the gate so that family and friends that can't access it with that steep ramp could actually park in one of the handicap spots and go in through the gate and be able to see their grandchildren play a football game or... and go in through the gate and be able to see their grandchildren play a football game or.
This is up at the track area?
Yes. So Scott's working on all of the specifics. But right now, the, the general estimate, because you never know until you really get in there and start actually specing everything. This was initial, like the initial spec would be around $22,000. Again, coaches, players, spectators, we want to make sure people can see our kids, their kids play. So we're looking at that as an option. Initially, we were thinking we could pave a whole section and give enough room for a vehicle to pull in and then back up in the parking lot and pull out. But upon further kind of redesign of that, I think a one-way horseshoe shape would actually be far safer for cars to pull in and off of Lincoln Street. We don't want any accidents or anything of the sort.
And that would still allow parking, space for parking?
Yeah, we looked at, we were looking at, one design had four parking spaces. So not a significant amount, but four spaces for those individuals that would need it in order to be able to access the field or the track.
Pulling in to the track from Lincoln Street itself?
Yes.
Isn't there a big culvert?
Yep. So we're actually are working with a designer on how that would, how they would essentially work with that space to do that. But there is a way to do it.
So I recommend you check with the superintendent of DPW before you go too far.
Yeah, no, Scott has talked with.
I know. Okay, all right.
Is there certain ADA compliance of how many parking spots you would need if you're putting in handicap spots?
That I don't know. I'm not sure if it's a, if there is a provision around that. Yeah, we would definitely make sure that that's, that's in place.
It's a long overdue project that should have been done a long time ago. I'm glad to see that on there.
So these would be the recommendations. The total of those four projects are $48,090. So I just wanted to share this tonight as it's a discussion item to give everybody a sense of what we are strongly urging we put in place and get done.
And the others that are on here are needed but lower on the list?
Yes. Yep. They all would be great, but at the end of the day, if we had to prioritize, these would be the strong recommendations from, from Scott, Denise and myself that we should.
And we have the funds for this in this budget?
We do.
Our current budget.
And at the next meeting, you'll have the financial forecast of what's next as far as the end of the fiscal year. It's looking like before our $250,000 reimbursement, we should land somewhere around $300,000 in terms of being the black at the end. But again, remember, we will get that $250,000 reimbursement from the federal government. So I think we would be comfortable enough to spend this on the capital project.
Do we think it's coming before July 1st?
I don't know. And even if it doesn't, that's actually okay because as of July 1, all of that money goes away and it's all tied up anyways in terms of needing to wait to be recertified as E and D. So even if it came in October, we would dump that $250 in anyways into the E and D certification. Does that make sense? Do you know what I'm saying?
Would it be helpful to make a motion to approve this now for like the timeline? To make sure it all gets done before the July 1st cutoff?
I put it on as a discussion item, but I mean, I think only because I wasn't sure what direction the committee was going to want to go and I didn't want to force an action if you all weren't ready to do that.
And are you holding back on the rest of this list?
Yes.
For a reason?
Yep. Yeah.
I mean, you can't, we can't act on it tonight. And so the only thing that's up in the air is the $22,000.
Right.
And if we approve this now and we do have a little bit of, we'll have another month if we need to add to it. You know, so to your point of, so we're not at the last moment, yeah.
Does the project have to already be started? How does that work?
Just allocate it, I think.
Allocate it?
Yeah. If you voted it tonight and we put in our.
Cumbrage.
Yep, we cumbered the money by, you know, tomorrow, Monday or Tuesday, sometime by early next week would be fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
I don't know. It was $48,000.
The project specified. I can, I can read off each one for the amount.
Sure.
The industrial burner repair for $14,640. The repair to the AC in the data room, $9,250. The repairs to the F-650 for area hydraulics for $2,200. And the handicap access for the track field area for $22,000.
Okay, so motion made by Dan and that would total.
$48,090.
For the capital, small capital projects presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. And? Any other questions about the projects or? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. And you'll come back to us if, if we have room for these others. You'll have a picking order. The electrical though, the parking lot, that's already being done.
Yes, yep, they're working on that now at the middle school.
They were working on that one.
That's on our update.
Oh, okay. I knew I saw that.
We included it on here. Yeah, that was, that's, they're working on the damaged wires now.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, and the facilities report are all items we have discussed prior. There's, there's nothing new or different on this. So I won't sit and read these items, but if there are any questions, by all means.
Perfect. All right, so moving on. That was the facilities update.
Yes.
School committee forum. And Matt?
Good, sure. So Cub Scout Pack 3144 in combination with Divine Mercy Parish are having their community fun day. Everybody's welcome to come on down. We're having, it's free burgers and hot dogs. The big freezer will be there. That's, that's not free. We will have an ice cream social. Small touch of truck. We'll have a BB gun shooting range, an inflatable BB gun shooting range, which is, you got to see it. It's pretty cool. Inflatable archery range, inflatable ax throwing range. A, an obstacle, inflatable obstacle course. And we will also have members of the 501st or 504th Regiment, which is a cosplay, Star Wars cosplay group that come out with movie grade costumes and will be there to take pictures. So come on down. It's 11:30 to 4:00 p.m. on June 4th, so we won't be meeting before that. So see everybody there.
Where's the being held?
Ah, sorry, it's at Divine Mercy Parish in the field right behind.
That's the old St. Paul's?
That is the old St. Paul's, yes. Really sticking with the Divine Mercy Parish.
No, it's good that you got the name.
Matt, would you mind saying the dates and times?
Sure, it's June 4th, 11:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Any other pieces to add for community, committee forum, community forum?
Madam Chair, I, I'll just add that we have a Memorial Day parade in Blackstone kicking off from the Common at 1 o'clock on Sunday afternoon. Going down to the town hall and then the festivities to follow the parade in Roseville.
Are there fireworks this year?
There'll be fireworks this year. Yeah.
Very nice. So it's Main Street?
Right down Main Street. It's the old short route. It's not from the Kennedy School anymore. It's just from the Common up at the High Rocks down to, down to the town hall.
And it's going to be great weather?
It's going to be great weather, yes.
And one heck of a grad marshal, so.
I don't know, that may be a relative.
It's my father.
Oh, nice. And is your, is the, are the Boy Scouts in the parade too?
Boy Scouts are absolutely in the parade. Yep, they'll be there for the flag raising at the beginning up at the, at the War Memorial and they'll be there for the, for taps.
Great.
We'll be at the, hold the flag at the, at the end of the parade as well. And, and, and Tori, you know, it's what an incredible career she's had here at BMR. And, and she was always at, anytime the town needed taps, I'm sure in your town too probably, you know, she was always there representing the district and the marching band with a great deal of pride. And I'm glad to hear of all her successes. And I, we don't have another meeting before graduation, so I wish all the seniors the best of luck. A safe, healthy summer and best in their future endeavors.
So if that being said, graduation is Friday, June 2nd at 15:00 p.m.
And I think one of the best things that came out of all the COVID, now that we said we are officially done with all those handbooks, are those senior portrait signs as you line the driveway. That's.
Yes. Yep.
They're awesome.
The kids were really looking forward to them. I think we're going to have to do it a little bit earlier. I heard like, we only have a week left. Like they want to see themselves. The pictures are probably in your parents' house. And you get to keep them forever, so.
The signs went in and the wind kicked up.
It was like immediate, yeah.
Oh, they're all blowing over?
Some blow over, yeah.
Kept fixing.
They seem to be.
Holding it okay.
Yeah.
And the decorations, the graduation decorations, we kept all that from the, the archways.
Yeah.
We did that up really nice. Outside photos.
I think we used a budget for flowers.
Like $60. We changed that.
For flowers. The decorations are amazing.
It looks great.
And a thank you to the custodial staff because the courtyard, everything is looking great. The class of 23.
It's good weather that night.
Sunny and ninety.
Oh, wow. That's a little hot.
Yeah.
I was thinking about.
Do we move inside at all, like?
No, only rain, right?
For what?
For heat.
Awards.
Sunblock.
Oh, awards the night before inside too.
It'd be hot.
Nights would be nice and toasty.
If it has an inclement weather inside the auditorium.
Right, we could if we had to move, yeah. But it's, both days are, right now are looking like sunny and ninety.
Ninety?
Yes. So, yeah, sunscreen and bring your bottle of water.
I have not looked at the weather, honestly.
It's going to be.
I haven't.
We become obsessed with it.
I've been obsessively checking in.
Yeah.
Well, please, the last few years, it's always been like the threat of rain. So that's nice to know that you don't see the rain threat yet anyway.
They had rain at their banquet.
Yeah, I know, right? Now it'll be thunderstorms because it's that warm. There'll be something.
Morning. Nope, their banquet got rained on, so that was their rain event. Now they can, you have sunny skies.
All right. Any other committee forum items to share?
Just that, looking at the committee forum, our names are wrong.
Yes.
We'll make sure that's fixed for.
I assume I was allowed to speak based on. I'm here.
Yeah, of course.
We're taming our error.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session. We'll do that by roll call and we will not return to. We will adjourn from there, but so duly noted, our next scheduled meeting is June 8th. And then June 22nd, which like we were in the center after graduation. So we definitely wish the graduates the best. And we might tweak that June 8th meeting when time, when it gets a little closer. So stand by for an update to that if we need to. And of course, if any, if anyone else wants to join us at the Millville Slacker meeting on Monday, June 5th, 7:00 p.m. and they do it in the side entrance of the town hall. We will be there. So looking for a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara and we'll roll call in. Ted?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Erin, yes. Tara?
Yes.
Tara, Chuck?
I'm glad that you said that. You're one good thing.